They wanted.
Officially, if we stand up slowly, we can call this meeting. For order, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel like we should all say another prayer to maybe consider that. Probably not. Alrighty. Good morning, everyone. Anybody have any conflicts or agenda? Otherwise, we will consider the agenda approved. I'll monitor. If you please read the meeting minutes of our previous meeting.
October twenty nine, twenty twenty four, the board of supervisors met at nine A M. with Jean Hayden, Chair presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg, to approve the following resolution. Crawford County Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash thirty four, reclassifying certain secondary roads from Area B to Area C. La, 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 let's see. Where is the important part?
Isn't there an important part?
That actually tells you the road. There it is. That portion of our avenue commencing at a point thirteen hundred and fifty feet west of the intersection of our avenue into inner tenth. West to a point fifty six hundred and thirty feet west of the intersection. That sounded redundant. Our Avenue into inner tenth. Voting aye. Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Motion passed unanimously.
No problem.
Are ya?
Yep. Both are measured from the same.
Both are west of the intersection. How can they both? Oh, oh, one zero, one zero. Got it. Okay, makes sense. Thanks. Sorry for that little whatever.
Yeah, first I was following it generally.
It's like, why do they both be west? Shouldn't one be?
They both measured from the same point.
Don't they measure from like this?
Just going to that.
Thinner of the intersection or whatever. Nate D Z G C O or J C O, sorry, J C O discussed with the board about shelter contract modified on July one of twenty twenty four. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the proclamation of supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Rossberg, to approve the appointment of Ashley Green E M T as medical examiner investigator. Motion passed unanimously. The board discussed the lighting in the basement of the C C S building. No action was taken at this time. The board discussed the cell phone policy. No action was taken. On motion duly seconded, board adjourned at ten fifty nine A M. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday four thirty P M preceding the next meeting.
Any corrections? Otherwise, fuck. Consider those approved. Okay. Reports from the supervisors. Anybody want to go first? I'm trying to be.
You wanna sign that?
I will.
I get a little off quick here. We're gonna take.
Take my time.
I got a conservation board meeting tomorrow night and I go on a bring back or maybe next week put back up on take action would be the cell phone policy. I've thought about that quite a bit. Maybe we need to revisit the whole thing again. I them foremen and maybe even public health. That's really their only form of communication they have and you know, we've spent a lot of money getting our first emergency responders to be able to communicate and maybe by limiting them to a certain kind of phone is maybe, maybe not right. I don't know. And maybe we're restricting their usage, maybe restricting their ability to work by saying they can only have that phone. Unless they pay, you know, maybe we need to consider upgrading, letting them be able to upgrade to that next phone.
So letting everybody that has a county cellphone then?
Yeah, maybe that to that next level.
Maybe needs to be the thirty or fifty dollar level. I, I, I think Verizon is gonna give you cheap options for the zero trade in.
Yeah. Or some places just do a stipend. You get so much for a phone, you do whatever you want with it. Just, just throwing it out for discussion purposes because I know complaints have been had that that business plan. Maybe you've experienced people have problems. They sit up here for an hour, talk, trying to talk to somebody to get problems fixed and.
Not very many people.
Not very many? Okay, well, these are.
I mean, but it happens.
I wouldn't advocate the latest, greatest, newest, no, expensive phone, but.
Well, if we put it back on the agenda.
We can put it back on the agenda. I mean, because I, I've thought about it too, I guess, and I kind of thought one of you could put it at the discretion of the department head where they could determine.
You know, we, I'm just trying to be, think that through. I mean, we sat here two weeks ago and talked about thirty to forty thousand to have just a redundant internet to that building over there. We were gonna spend that. Here we were talking about a thirty dollar cellphone.
But I think part of the, are, are we going to want them to have two phones, one for the county and one for their personal? Because I think that's kind of part of it too, you know, if you're gonna have the, is it your home phone?
No, this is their county phone.
Right, this is their county phone.
This is not their personal phone.
Do they have two phones then?
I would assume so. I don't know if they have a personal phone, but I know they, they got a county phone.
Most people, most people have personal phones.
The one thing I do know is that with my time at secondary roads, the West Side Foreman's phone number's been the same since Neil Wilkins had his phone. It's been eight zero eight five. It's been through Neil Wilkins, Derek Meyer, Damon Schmidt, Chris Parker, they've all had the eight zero eight five phone number.
Well, we wouldn't change that.
So I'm guessing that phone just keeps getting passed along.
Right, as you upgrade, the phone number stays the same.
Right, new person comes in, they hand off the phone.
But they upgraded that phone instead. That's how it would be.
Right.
That's why I'm.
I mean, it kind of works the same as your personal. Every two years, you're, you're due for an upgrade.
But here would be my question when we have that conversation. It's usually the internet that's causing you to not be able to interact with somebody. I, you know, the phone itself, you know.
Exactly, and that's, that is part of, you know, the has, as it's evolved, you know, these guys are on, I have one call. They're trying to send communications back and forth with contractors or Paul or whatever out in a field, you know, this, this is their, this is their only, not only form of communication, but it's become more of their way to communicate and interact and work with who they're working with.
They need to update the capability of the phone as your people you're trying to communicate with and say, update their phone. You still need to communicate with them.
So some of that I can see is probably needed and.
Have people complained, come and personally said something to you about that?
Yeah, but this, well, the short term problem has been solved. Sean has paid for his phone or is going to. So this is something we can discuss and move forward with. They don't have to be immediate.
No complaints on the file right now.
No.
But you know, you're, you're right. Look at your phone, your, your weather updates, your emails, your texts.
So the one that they can get.
Do everything. It's just the computer.
Some of it's more.
Right, the one they can get for free is not the latest, greatest.
But it, it won't get them apps and stuff like that?
Oh, absolutely, it will.
But some of the storage capabilities.
I, I think where the, where, for me, it's gonna be if they're putting all their personal stuff in it and it's closing it down.
This is county phone.
Right. But who's managing that? Exactly. Is it, is it managed?
Supposed to be your department heads, I would assume.
I don't have phones in my office. I don't have to manage. They all use their own personal phones because it doesn't cost them anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, we'll have a discussion about it.
Absolutely.
You know, and.
I would.
Last tip, I don't know.
Well, and there's a risk. I mean, there's a risk for using your personal phone for county businesses. There's a risk.
And that, you know.
There is.
And have our.
But I don't expect everybody to do it.
I wouldn't expect everybody to do it.
Is that weekly?
If I have more than half. I'm twelve right now. I've got the entire housing.
The last argument I'll probably put on this deal is.
Everybody else says.
We keep getting, we keep getting told that we, we, we can't, we control their budgets. We don't control how they spend their budgets, so.
That's where I was going.
So it would be safe to say it could be a department head's discretion on some of the stuff too.
Well, you probably control a department head's budget more than you ever would control an elected official's budget. Because most of them are your employees.
That's a true statement.
Yeah, but.
That's a true statement.
Neither here nor there. It's not for me to say. It's for y'all to say.
Just something I've been thinking about.
I, I guess the information that we would need to know is exactly what phone we offer and then.
How much are you gonna allow them to spend?
I just think that next.
Michelle had that right now.
Yeah, I think so. I don't.
I just think the next three up, you know, like the thirty dollar, whatever the next one up was.
Yeah.
It's got a little more storage.
Right, sixteen's the latest, right?
Yeah, I think. The iPhone sixteen?
I have an iPhone eight.
And thirty covered the iPhone fourteen.
I have a fourteen.
You have a fourteen?
I have a fourteen.
I have an eight.
Yeah.
I don't even have.
And it's storing with a hundred and twenty eight gigabytes.
The circle going on and on. Thanks, Michelle.
She's kind of like having radar on her.
Well, she's on there.
Oh. Somebody actually is watching our meetings.
Let's put that on next.
On next week.
It, it covers the same exact phone I have and I have over app, no demand coming down here. Including Facebook and everything.
So you allow them to upgrade and do the next best thing, whatever it is, and if they still have problems, then what are you gonna do?
Well, we're gonna blame Verizon in their.
Well, I mean, there's some to that too. Last night in my house, I can throw a rock and hit the cellphone tower and I had zero service. I had zero service at my house last night.
I had it this morning.
S O S and my, you had S O S and my wife had S O S.
I've had that a couple times recently. I don't know if they're having some issue with the whole service net.
During harvest, we had, how many people across America wiped out with that service?
I've had several and that's all you'd have then is that S O S.
So.
But I think that's Verizon.
Well, that, well, today, I couldn't print a check on my computer.
Something to discussion.
Absolutely. I mean, a thirty dollar phone is certainly not a budget breaker.
No.
No.
Maybe, you know, it would be what, three or four phones.
Even forty dollars or whatever it would be, whatever you're gonna allow.
Most people don't wanna carry two phones around.
Yes.
Most people that I know.
Valid point, yes.
Really want to have to have two phones.
Yeah, I'd be paying for it all myself, so if I had to carry.
That's exactly why I don't.
I know. I don't wanna.
I have trouble keeping track of one.
Ask anybody. I cannot keep track of one.
Where's my phone? That's a, that's a common question. I'll call it for you.
I learned how to ping it on my watch.
Maybe a bad, you know, a stipend deal would be confusing, especially for a foreman that have had that same number for twenty years.
It's a different scenario.
Right.
Because everybody, all the people in the county that know if they need to get a hold of the foreman on that side, they know that number is eight zero eight five.
We don't want.
And that changed every ten years or whatever.
Well, and to tell you the truth, for the foreman's instance, like Damon or Sean, I would want a county phone because I wouldn't want the general public to have my personal phone to call me at all hours and call my county phone.
Yeah, leave a message. I'll see it in the morning.
Right.
Yep.
And so to make that, you know, anybody in the county can have a county phone.
I don't think it could be everybody. I mean, it's gonna be, the department has discretion on who should get a county phone.
Right.
Because I don't think, discovery employee don't necessarily need one.
Put it on there.
It's already on. Terry's got it on.
All right, very good.
And public health, the new C C C, that are rebuilding is looking really.
Let's go ahead.
This morning, there was nobody there, but the grid hailing or the ceiling is looking pretty good.
Uh, let's go ahead and talk about the lighting as long as, because there's no reason to keep that till the end. Um, I did go through the building with D M U and we're gonna get a nice rebate as long as we get it done by the end of the.
That's a, that's a, do you wanna bring that on?
But that's not a take action because it's not ready for take action.
Oh.
Yeah, we, we don't have the estimate yet. They've gone through and.
He's expediting the meeting for Terry.
Pretty much, pretty much trying. But here's the good news. The flooring will be going in on Friday. I told them and so they'll be down to put the flooring in on Friday. I went through the building yesterday with Kim to make sure that everything that she needs as far as electrical, um, the painting and things, we kind of pointed out some things that need to be addressed and so that upstairs, once they're done with the dirty stuff down the basement, we will get our deep cleaner in there and get those carpets cleaned up and be ready to start getting things moved in upstairs where the painting is.
That means we need to get Jake on the ball, get his stuff moved in there.
They say the mini splitter is, well, it's actually in the building.
For the air conditioner.
And the electrical's ready in his room for him or what?
Their wires were there, I think, the most part, yeah.
We have hammered.
So de cleaner, will there be an invoice from, there'll be an invoice for that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a sheet art.
Okay, good, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was still an invoiceable item for her.
Paid for or Corey Gasol's got a lot of that stuff for Jake's room like two years ago already done.
I remember he was talking about losing the warranty before we ever got it in.
We paid half already, so he could order the equipment.
That's what I thought. Like I said, with warranties up, we haven't even got it in.
And he wonders about that.
Were to get two years ago, that's why he ordered them.
He, uh, we, we probably saved on the price, but we're, we started warranting by just having it set there, so. Uh, things are moving along. Louise and I are going to go in and clean those windows down the basement. We're just gonna take a day and get some good cleaning products. Rachel Lake, it'll be fun. I'll clean those windows downstairs.
Cabinets are ordered.
Cabinets are ordered. They're gonna go in on top of the floor instead of.
Vanities and all that, the bathrooms ordered. Should start coming together pretty darn quick. Doors are ordered.
Yep.
He called me this morning and talked about door handle. It'll be all keyed except the two closets, all logable.
How's the A D A of the door?
Uh, there, I sent them the video of where we're at with our electrical and they're gonna get down there hopefully this week to get that done. Get that so that they can just.
It's coming together. I know Dave Seroth, they talked to Carol Control, they're gonna be in and out while they're putting the false ceiling in because they have to run all their ductwork through the new false ceiling to get all that buttoned up.
List as they go.
And they, Dave's getting the rebates put together for the new furnaces and air conditioners, so.
Laura Harris did the, the rebates for the lighting, uh, which were.
We might have her in there before Christmas yet.
Well, uh.
Are you working on an R F P then for the lighting or what are you?
Well, we need an estimate to kind of know, you know.
Oh, and someone's working that up for you?
Yep.
Got it.
As we have.
What estimate of what you need, you mean?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
He, he, he is working with D M U because they went through with a sheet of paper for every.
Rory's got a pretty good list of lights, so.
Yeah.
Any real or got any bite on the Andy's building?
At one point in time, Nipple thought they were gonna have somebody wanting to look at it, but that as it stayed, nobody's had to have gone through it.
Catch him.
Kitty whiskers. Looks pretty sharp, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks real good.
From what I could see, it looked pretty good.
So that's, uh, so we don't have any action item online because we don't know the exact. It takes a little bit of time to get that, but they're, they're really coming along nicely with everything in the building.
Okay, awesome. Uh, just a couple things. Like I said last time, last week is we did have interviews for the new CFO at Wesco one Monday afternoon, one Tuesday afternoon. We made an offer to an individual and I'm on her back. Tuesday also had early childhood, about twenty eighty meeting at noon. Nothing really to report there.
You've been getting quorum on that, right?
Yes.
So you haven't, I know you haven't said nothing.
Yeah, I got you on speed dial in case we need you, but we were fine. We did, I did get a meet, but don't remember the names. I should have wrote them down, but they have a new interim director there. She was there and a new president of the Imagination Station Board and she was there also. And I'll report once I get the minutes as to what their major, because I'd forgotten. There was something, oh, uh, talked to our guy that's gonna put our new fence in and he's just said it'd be at least two weeks before he would be there. So, um, talked to Jim Muff. He's got his calves weaned. So he's got the cows on the south end, but he said, hey, if it's gonna be a couple of weeks, I may need a boom, so I don't want the fence taken out now. So with this rain that we've got, I think probably next week, I'll get Damon to get the crew out there, take, get the fence taken out. So we'll be ready when, um, Dalton Hamblin is the individual's name that's gonna do the fence. We'll, we'll be there. And Kyle and I got a meeting, brief meeting this, or after this with F S A. We just have a few questions about our C R P. Jacobson, I believe, is the new F S A director out there at Wesley Ficus has retired. So that's all I got.
Rachel took the job up here? What?
I'll be all right.
What will be all right? So she moved from Sheldon back to.
I don't know where she was.
She was Sheldon, okay.
I suppose.
Okay, two more seconds. I did get the housing report that we had talked about last week that you guys wanted me to sit in on. So they sent me the report and look who used to be on that committee.
Well, and look at those good looking young guys.
I know it. They look so young, but that's, the report is very long.
Dozen years ago or what was it?
I know. You guys remember sitting on that, so they're kind of gonna be having a meeting. I know, I know. I thought you guys would be interested in that. We also had our, uh, unit V V C S, early childhood. And so they jumped voting on, this is relevant, but we just talked about paying Annette Coster's internet at her house and for part of her phone and the space that she uses for her office.
That's gonna scare me.
I'm what's not in favor of all of that. I thought it was time for her to work. And it says right in our bylaws that it's not, it's a, it's a privilege to work at home that we're being involved back in time. So I voted no to paying the, you know, court buddies in the office that uses or her spending her internet at home and her cellphone. And then afterwards, I called and talked to Molly to kind of explain what my thought process was on that. And then she, I was told that there isn't room at the courthouse and so they would have to rent something for us, so they figured it was cheaper. But I never got all that memo before the meeting, so, but it still passed, but I just thought, you know, somebody's working from home and we're paying this, you know, she said she had her husband measure out the space she's using and then the percentage of the internet that we're gonna pay for her to be able to work from home and the percentage that we pay for our cellphone. I just thought it was time for everybody to get back to work, you know, if you're, you know, it's gonna, but I guess the, it would be similar to somebody moving back to the courthouse that we had taken their space. There wasn't room, so that's why they, but that message I didn't get until after I voted, but it still passed, but I did want to let you know that stuff. There is a room, so it's, they figure it's less expensive to just have her continue to work from her basement and we just pay. You know me, but anyway.
Well, I think I might have voted the same way you did if you didn't have.
Yeah, yeah, it said right in the, I, what I had read, it said that it's a privilege to work from home, not, you know, that. And I thought, well, you're, you're, it's a privilege to be able to work from home. You don't have to get dressed. You don't have to have any mileage on your car. You can dinner in.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, you can call your friends, say, yeah, I'm from home. Do you wanna have coffee? I've got people, it's just like that.
I mean, at least when I'm aware, most private, the private companies that I've worked for, that they make you office at home, they usually do pay for your phone and your internet.
Yes.
But they don't pay you any rent for square footage.
Well, that was a little, that kind of took me.
That's a little excessive.
That kind of took me a little by, by surprise too, and I guess she actually stores our things at home that, that she actually, there is no place in the county that all of the things she has in Molly.
I mean, I have my own file cabinets and stuff and. Yeah, that's just.
I, I guess.
Okay.
There's the best money.
I mean, because I guess my, even my kids, that office at home that I'm aware of, they have it the other way where, right. It's open to come, you can come here.
Right, right, right.
We have the office for you, that's available, but if you choose to be at home, then that's on you. We got everything right here at work. You don't, if you wanna work at home, we allow you to do that, but now all that cost is on you.
You know, because even the meeting that we were having, I, I could see there was a couch in this room and, uh, you know, and that does a great job. She's, she's very thorough, does a good job, but I thought if you could go back to work and you choose to work at home, I, you know, I just it's not connecting all the dots, so.
Right, if you don't have the room, then I guess I can see where you pay the cost, but I haven't, the rental part of the square footage seems.
It is kind of like if it all doesn't make sense, you just don't know. You can't vote yes because, because two things make sense, but one thing didn't and you didn't wanna spend the rest whole afternoon arguing about it.
Right, right.
No. Uh, but just like everything else, we're worried about where all the money's gonna come from. One of the interesting things that I wrote down is that there's folks in Crawford that are a hundred and twenty five percent below the poverty level.
Oh, I, that don't surprise me. I would think there's probably more that are closer to two hundred percent.
Yeah, but I always think that those numbers and stats are interesting when we start thinking about our budget and how we run this county.
That's very important to remember, those people. Exactly.
That stuff that's brought up to me constantly, so anyway.
How does that compare to other counties you're honest? That's what we really need to evaluate, because we always get that paper that's comparing everybody.
Let me see if I can find those numbers for you, uh, because they're so readily available with our students.
That would be helpful.
Better than I can. I would just Google.
You know, the counties are number and then the ones around us.
Iowa.
And the census should have, if you go to that census website, they usually have.
A lot of times we're like the ninetieth and sometimes we're the, in the eighties, but we're always on the lower, lower end.
And so those are the things that are important to pay. Those are the things I wrote down that were.
That shows that that's that many people in, you know, qualify.
But.
Not that they're getting an, an exception to the rule, they're qualified because they are under the poverty level.
What I think about is there's some folks that are probably below it, but really back in the day when I was in school, you know, and you had free lunch. I think they had to wipe the tables off. You, you could tell, you know, it was kind of not anything you're too proud of that you had free lunches at school, you know, now.
In the ninety nine counties in Iowa, Crawford County is eighth in the highest poverty level. There's only, you know, there's ninety one counties that are below us.
Those numbers are as important.
They're better than us.
Right.
And, you know, we have people that are a hundred and twenty five percent below.
I'm amazing, Shannon.
So those are just.
Man, I go to the show too. I mean, I know that the school district in Crawford County, could Daniel have qualified for the whole school, get free reduced lunches because they're at.
Yes.
Correct, sixty seven percent.
Try rope was always just like one percentage away from being, every kid could get it because there's so many kids that do it. Qualify for.
In reality. Do they check qualifications?
I don't think they check it nearly as much.
Not really. I think you fill out a form and you qua, that's a qualification in itself is filling out the form.
Really? Oh.
Yeah, I don't know that there's.
Well, well, maybe that's.
Just saying, sorry, that's what I understand.
That's not as good a qualifier as we think.
Because I think the school district gets that subsidized by federal government.
Oh, it is.
Right.
They do.
So why wouldn't they miss out for two hundred and things?
Right, so.
Like if that's not a federal government doesn't check.
Not a good measuring stick.
No, I, no, I get that and some people have more pride, more, I mean, you know, that they wouldn't do that. They wouldn't shyster the plan.
I'll, I'll try to.
Use some people.
And I'm not saying the people that are applying are to shyster the plan. I'm just saying.
Back when I was a kid, you know, but that's when, if you couldn't afford the school lunches, that's when your parents sent you your lunch to school.
Yeah.
Mom would make us a sack lunch.
I used to love sack lunches, the hunters.
Snack pack and a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and you were gonna go, maybe now. That was it.
I didn't get to eat, so it's all good.
But there are kids in Crawford County that, that might be the best meal they could.
Absolutely. I know.
And luckily we have to have, I mean.
We've got Crawford County Hunger Fighters.
Hunger Fighters have a lot of resources.
They have, yeah, we do.
Never had before.
We do, uh, and those are the best programs we have, so I have no problem with if you fit within that guideline that you get free lunch at school. I think it's great, but I just think those numbers for Crawford County are important when we set up this table and try to make a budget and think that we're a law for county. But I just think those numbers for Crawford County are important when we set up this table and try to make a budget and think that we're a local county. I think I'm done.
I'm gonna piggyback right off you because I had my first state ECI board meeting. Uh, which was very interesting.
They called you Dan, but I corrected them.
Dan, you know, I'm, I, my sign of name was Dan for the.
You shouldn't probably admit that.
But, no, it was interesting, the state board meeting, it was a three hour meeting, they had a in-person option in Des Moines and then we zoomed, I zoomed in. We had four new board members approved, um, a lot to learn on this, again. One of the few key notes, things that kind of hurt my interest or thoughts, um. They've been consolidating some of the ECI areas, territories, and it brought up some. Good discussion, one was, um, Potawatomi County area, Muscatine, we just approved. The merging of, uh, that area and Quad Cities, um, another one. But what's interesting about that is it was brought up by one of the senior board members. And so, you know, when ECI first started, it was ninety-nine counties, it was all smaller, the whole idea of early childhood was. They wanted grandparents, business people, local involvement, and people to realize. Their vibes, what their needs are, and really put it in the hands of locals. And how that funding got spent, well, like everything else. You know, you don't have the people, you don't have the resources, so you're seeing these bigger areas have to consolidate, like the. The merging of Quad Cities with Kid First, uh, Territory, they were sharing the same. Uh, director, fiscal agent, a lot of duplication, so we're on this fine line of. I get why, why they're having to consolidate to try to be more efficient, but yet the senior board member brought up. His fear of, you know, if you get too big, of losing that local representation of, hey, in Crawford County, this. This is what we're seeing, you know, you start to get six counties big, our voice, I mean, kind of like mental health, is I'll go to Woodbury or.
Look how big it comes in.
Right, so there was that discussion that, you know, yes, we, we approved the merging of those two, but yet it's like. Let's be aware of, you know, we don't wanna have these massive districts either that are so, that leave the, you know, rural areas out in the cold.
Look how much windshield time everybody gets, that should be concentrated on actually seeing people. And you're driving, you know, it's all over and, yeah, I don't see.
But especially, you know, if the whole premise of early childhood was to be local and to support your locals, you want that engagement. Few other things we did go over, they had the state audit, they had something, uh, every year that we have to do. Dr. Heather Bruce out of Iowa State gave that report, and it came from data from Daisy. They did say that Iowa is one of the only states to have this in-depth of data and report for ECI to see. Where the funds are going and how they are affecting our, you know, our population, there's zero to five kids. Was brought up out of, they had three different pie graphs, so let's say seventy-five percent of children that are eligible for. Some of the ECI services get scraped, of that seventy-five percent. Only twenty percent get referred on further, and of that twenty-five percent, ninety-two percent of, that twenty percent actually get received services. So ultimately, of the seventy-five percent of eligible kids, eighteen percent are actually receiving services. It's kind of a long way to get. So, it was asked.
Who came up with that?
That's all part of their, their reporting.
Twenty percent of the kids receive food ninety percent of the time.
In a way though, only seventy-five percent of the eligible, that's not even a hundred percent of the eligible. So seventy-five percent of the eligible kids, only eighteen percent of them receive. And that's not just, that's, you know, that could be preschool tuition, eye smiles.
So why only seventy-five percent? Some people don't know aware or not, I think it's awareness. For it or.
Parents not wanting government involved in, uh, telling them what they have to do with their kid.
I think information resource, you know, having it out there, some of them too, the way they don't go on further, once they are referred, parents might just. Don't have the ability to get to.
Don't understand the importance.
Right, I, um, but I thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
Then we talked quite a bit about, um, Governor Reynolds initiated this Thrive Iowa, you want that? It's a resourced referral network, and they're basically trying to, from what I understand. Just for being one meeting, and they're trying to put all these resources together and maybe. Have a better ability to give those resources to the people so it's more known, or even some of the resources so they're not duplicated among different.
Agencies.
Agencies, um, what they, sounded like what they did was they took a million dollars out of ARPA funds from HHS. And they have, I think, five different pilot programs that they're gonna try to do to start the, this initiator or Thrive Iowa.
See what works.
And their whole, I, my question was, okay, you got this million dollar seed money and five different pilot programs. You know, we all know, if, if funding isn't there regularly, you could get started, but then. And they said, well, there isn't continuation of funding, what they're hoping is that they get some of these off the ground that. Locally, those agencies or local body of governments will see the benefit and pick up the tab, well.
What, what, you mean like the county governments? The ones that are getting their property taxes cut again, you mean?
Right.
I thought I'd brought that out.
I was thinking the same thing.
I think the overall, I mean, I, I get why Governor Reynolds did it, I mean, she was trying to. Put all these resources together, but on the backside too, I'm, that was my question, it's like, well, you get enough to get started, but. If the funding isn't there, they're, they're gonna stop right away.
Two hundred thousand dollars for each project don't go very far.
Oh, you're paying the administration probably about a hundred and fifty of it.
At least.
Right.
At least half.
So, and, and I really, Thrive Iowa is supposed to consolidate early childhood of Iowa's services, family services and community services. And to me, that's, that's pretty broad, I mean, there are a lot of resources and services under that umbrella. But like I said, the first meeting, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of information thrown at you, and take a little bit to kind of. Right. But I, I do think.
Yeah, the first meeting.
But I thought it was a good board, it was very interesting, glad to be on it, I am gonna, I'm gonna be in Des Moines next week for. Uh, executive board meeting for ISAC, and after the ISAC meeting, I'm gonna meet with the chairman of the ECI board, Bob Mendelmoine. Have coffee with him, just kind of go over a few things and.
Good.
Get some more knowledge on that, um, otherwise, I got region twelve also next week.
I mean, I remember a couple of months ago, I just found that, what I was having some statistics, I was reading off from West Central Community Action that I ended up. Emailing to, or Megan, I think, ended up emailing it to a board member, but Crawford County. Uh, percentage of people living in the, below the federal poverty level, Crawford is at eighteen point oh-six percent of their total population. And of the ten counties that West Central Community Action serves, that is the highest amount, the next highest is. Page County at thirteen point nine one.
Wonder what makes us so high.
It's almost three thousand people. What's that?
It's almost three thousand people.
Yeah.
Which kind of makes sense why so many people qualify for food assistance at school is, a lot of these programs. I will say, even like, right, with West Central and Wesco, ECI. We get to see a lot of things done positively, directly because of the funding and because of these, you know, services.
Good point.
Or sometimes it gets lost in the big programs and, and the administration work, and just, I guess my point is locally. You see the best results when locals are.
Correct, I don't take into account age, I don't give age demographics, does it, cause I mean, we're a pretty high. Population of elderly, on, on fixed incomes, uh. I mean, that's probably a pretty good share of that. I would agree. Maybe that's half of that, but if not, a little higher than that.
Interesting. I, uh, I don't have a great deal, it's my turn.
It is your turn if they.
I, I don't, I really don't have a lot, uh, I do, I did wanna bring up Veterans Day stuff, I know that the school here in Dennison's having something on Thursday. An event up at the school, I believe it's in the morning, have to look it up, and it's on the. CD, or KDSN's, uh, community calendar. I don't know if there's any, I'm gonna guess Legion's doing something else in the, uh, Charter Oak has their. Feather party, whatever, that's the old name for it, where they have their bingo on Sunday night, this coming Sunday night. And, uh, Dow City has a big lunch.
Celestic usually has.
I don't know for sure, I, I didn't see that one on the calendar, but if we go to what's happening Celestic, or, you know, you're from Celestic or whatever, they're called, or Paige. I, I'm sure you can find that, I'm sure they, they got a good Legion post, uh, BFW and what have you, the, uh. Then, like I said, Dow Cities is like noon on Sa- Sa- on Saturday, I believe so, yeah, I believe so. But, uh, also that should be on the commu- community calendar, so, uh, Louise put our new signs out front, uh, I seen, uh. I drove by a, a, a local area business and seen some ice green lights out in front of their building, and, uh. The, uh. I don't know, the operation green light seems to be gaining traction, I hope it continues to across the nation, you know, I mean, I was kind of surprised that. On my last, uh, military veteran affairs meetings where they were said, yeah, we put some lights out on our courthouse on the other share, and I was kind of shocked that that wasn't already happening. Pretty widespread across the country, but it's catching, it's coming on, so that's good to see. So I think that's for all the veteran stuff, you know, I mean, I know the radio station was trying to get ahold of a couple vets that they don't typically find. And I threw a couple of names at them, uh, hopefully they can get somebody. Uh, few, you know, it's kind of hard, some of the guys, oh, I'm not talking to anybody about that stuff, you know, I mean, so I get it, I mean, I'm. I'm bashful about some of the things I talk about, but, uh, you know, I mean, as fuck, yeah, I know. Army thing, I like to tell some of the good stories, you know, if it's gonna make you laugh, I'm all about telling them, but it's. But there are other stories, so I get where some guys, you know, wanna be, guys and gals are more reserved about their, their stories. But, uh, I don't know, with Veterans Day coming up, I suppose I'm a little more sentimental right now, I mean, that's. In a big election year, Veterans Day right around the corner, I mean, so, my thoughts are kind of all over them two places right now, but, uh. I got, uh, meetings next week, or they're all, most of them are Naco stuff, Zoom meetings, obviously I'm not driving to DC. I did get my, uh, invite for legislative conference. That is, uh. I think the dates are the first through the fourth of March, so I'll probably fly out like the, into February and then come back. And I think the fourth is a Tuesday, so.
That's in DC?
Yeah, that one's out in DC, so that one to me is one of the important ones, and hopefully, God willing, or be well enough into the year. That we'll be really talking about farm bill things and get to rocking on that and get that stuff done, you know, I mean, they don't. You know, whenever they do the CRs, I don't know, I probably have explained it before, they just go back to what last farm bill said and they just extend that, but there's obviously.
We actually still extended from the nineteen ninety-five one.
I feel like that, I think we've had ones since then, but.
Well, yeah, we have.
We probably had two. Yeah, but in any event, I think that we'll get some traction going on that, you know, on the farm bill, you know, that's the egg. That's what we've been talking about, we knew that, you know, what do they call it, the lame duck session after the election before. They just don't see any traction, depending on who got voted in, but I just don't see any traction, cause they're still gonna all be trying to. Make their, figure out how they're gonna attack the next two to four years, you know, depending on what, oh, perhaps they're sitting out there. But, uh, hopefully we get some business done, no matter who's in charge.
Hopefully, they know by then.
What's that?
Hopefully they know.
Yeah, hopefully, I'm over there, no kidding.
No promises.
What's that?
No promises.
Yeah, yeah, no promises. What's that?
You know who's all going.
Uh, I'm a Garen, I'm gonna, I'm, Richard and Barry, I'm, I'm sure will be there, you know, um. Yeah, Kyle goes to the legislative one for sure.
Carl, I'm sure he'll go. Sure, Carl.
Carl will be there, yeah, he's actually, yeah, Carl will be there, um. You know, Melvin, I don't, he's not, he was, he lost his primary, so he won't be out there.
Grant Beeter, retired, advanced retired.
Yeah, he's retired, so I mean, it's, it'll be interesting to see, I mean, I would ask you to see about pushing. Make sure, talk to our new president.
They probably got hordes of food there.
I mean, it's, we, we have, we have a pretty good.
But there, most of them are there by six.
They set up good meetings, so, I mean.
The meeting, usually like a conference center or?
Well, we actually, it's the Hilton District, which is up north of where the White House area is. Uh, you're, you're off the beat trap, what is that, Dupont Circle, it's just north of there, and, uh. It's a big hotel that can, that can fit everybody in it, and then the conferences, all of our trainings and then get together and get together with officials. We get a lot of the, the officials from the different departments, whether it's DNR type things or, you know, uh. Army Corps of Engineers will show up to things that are, to do with that, you know, foreign people, you know, we'll have like the. The, uh, staffers that'll be running the farm bill stuff, that we'll have meetings with them and stuff like that, so. And, uh, then we do have the last day, which is the Tuesday, that's, that's the day that we go up to the hill and. I think that's what it's scheduled for this year, is up, go up to the hill and talk to the different people, and so I already talked to Colby, I said, make sure that Senator. Is there this year, got words for her, wanna see what she's up to with our farm bill, so, anyway, uh. That's all I got, sorry, I re. I'll surrender the floor, he's got some business to take care of today. There you go, yeah, chop the bottom of that off. Good morning, happy election day.
Happy, happy.
Yeah.
It will all be over with soon, so. Uh, just have a permit here from West Central Iowa, rural water, and there are four copies that are getting serviced to, uh. Mark Schwerin. So I guess I'm probably another person whose wells probably, I don't know for sure, that'd be presented.
That's where Mark lives.
He lives south of there, that's his curve right there, and, and, you know, or just maybe hook it up just because. Anyhow, that's what that is, um, who's the, uh. Project on E sixteen, unfortunately, unfortunately, we're getting rain, unfortunately for the project, we're getting rain, so. Um, but, uh, always, always complain. Uh, there's actually four copies. But, uh, you know, as soon as it dries up, then we get a break, go up and get the concrete out and. Get it shaped up, we'll get it done, it just, you know, I mean.
I would say the majority of people realize the rain is far more important.
The rain's important, yeah, yeah, so that's where we're at with that. Uh, great crew there up on J Avenue, that'll probably be the last grading project of the year, cause you know, we get to Thanksgiving. Uh, we could do more perhaps, but we'll see what's, what happens, but generally we get to Thanksgiving, start to kind of. Temperatures get cold and it's a little more difficult, but we've had another fantastic year for them and the bridge crew. Temperatures get cold and it's a little more difficult, but we've had another fantastic year for them and the bridge crew, which they'll be done uh, with that bridge probably here in a day or two. And then they're gonna go down on uh, W Avenue, South of Buck Grove and take the bridge out there and put a cord in, so. So keep that going and roadside crews mowing. We're keen, had to call him back in this morning, he's out in the rain. Miles Hill, South of Dow City, it's like, oh, you don't need to be outside today for two. I love, I love any passion. You just got to, he's a great guy, you know, but he was concerned with the operator just a little bit. Anyhow, uh, items four and five, those are the spray truck, um, so, you know, it looks like that could all kinda fall into place. And everyone has, you know, understand we will need to do a budget amendment.
I need your stuff for that, we're gonna try and do one in the next month or so.
Oh, okay. I can, I can do this, I mean, the secondary road.
Right, it'll be later in the year.
Do another one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so this is, yeah, this is no problem.
Yeah.
I can get you something for that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Um, so I talked to, you know, Team Auto, that's where the truck would come from, the chassis, and that chassis would be dropped, shipped to um. I think it's Auburn, Washington. And that's where they do the truck spray build, uh, and uh, put that on the chassis and then.
The shipping in that pressure?
And then FOB, that's FOB Dennison, yeah, that'll be delivered here to Dennison.
So that, that's in all that price of shipping out and back?
Right, right. Well, the truck just gets shipped there directly. So yeah, everything, there's no transportation. You got additional transportation cost in any of these prices, so it's uh.
And the cost then of the spreader truck is those two combined.
That's those two combined, correct, yeah. Yeah, the chassis is sixty-six, nine, ten, and they actually, since the last time we priced it, they had a four hundred dollar, additional four hundred dollar concession. So that went down four hundred dollars, uh, which is good. Uh, the spray equipment. And so I just talked to KB Swain, who's with the North Star, he's the guy that I work with out there and, you know, we're hopefully get the truck there by January. And then get the build done and have it here in Dennison by May first, the latest.
That'd be nice.
He said, that shouldn't be any problem. And he said, our goal is to get this, the reason we're doing this is so that we don't have to use the old truck next year. And so, he said, it shouldn't be any problem as long as we, you know, get the truck.
How do you do with the old truck?
Uh, we're gonna strip all the stuff off of it. See, we did an engine rebuild on that a couple of years ago. Um, and so we're gonna strip everything off of it and turn it into a flatbed truck and use it on the great crew, maybe put a decent fuel tank, maybe rig it up for. And put a ball on it, it's gonna hold it or pull a goose neck. It's a good heavy, you know, truck duly and it's not.
Spray equipment off of it?
We'll strip everything off, get rid of everything, maybe sell the tank down here at the sale barn, but all the other stuff is just wore out. So we'll just get rid of that stuff. And uh, turn it into a flatbed truck. That's the plan. Make a ni- I think it'll make a nice flatbed truck through, either the bridge crew or the great crew.
Yeah. Is the glue on four wheel drive?
No, we really don't need four wheel drive, cause they're spraying and if it's muddy and stuff, they usually, they shouldn't be out spraying. Not saying they wouldn't be spraying in the rain.
He'll argue, he'll argue with you, it's better to spray in the rain, weeds are open, they're taking it in, so.
He, he will, yeah. He just said that to me, I said, I don't think we want to be out there in the rain.
Isn't that something?
But, um, but he is right, but you can wait till the rain stops, cause the plant's still open. After the rain stopped.
We sprayed some in the rain last year and trying to get a field done and. I had a better field there than we did in.
We done. So, um, so anyhow, that's, that's the goal here, is to, to get.
Contact versus.
And uh, so that's why we're doing this.
So do we have a motion to purchase the twenty twenty-five Ford five fifty?
So move.
Second. Any further discussion, the on said motion. Was a call of vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, Chairwoman's aye. Uh, motion has been approved. Should we just do the next one at the same time? You guys ready?
I move, we approve item five, model one twenty-seven, five eight eight.
I'll send it up.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any signed? Chairwoman's aye, motion has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item is this agreement with the city of Vail on that bridge replacement. This, I mean, this is a very simple agreement, just says, we'll replace the bridge. And they'll pay us a hundred thousand dollars over a six-year period.
Oh, I did have, Chris Whittaker reached out to me, cause you know, they were kind of on hold with that million and a half dollar bridge. And he just, and we were at that meeting and got that. But uh, let's just pump the brakes on that till we have our meeting and.
Right.
He just, I, I told him we came up with an agreement and he's, oh, that's, that's just great, that's just, it just didn't make sense.
That's right.
He just was thrilled that we came up to an agreement between the county.
Yeah, who's that Chris Whittaker with?
With Region Twelve, he was the one that was helping with the, you know, they reached out.
Writing the grant.
Well, I think what he does, so he's, he, he does a lot of the programming for cities. Like I do, county, he does that for all the cities in the region, so for the city. See, they, they have, all these projects have to go through the DOT. And they don't have the background, the experience to do the. Programming and all of that stuff, so he has to make sure that all of the things that flow through the DOT for the city projects get done. In terms of programming the project and making sure that they're aware of it. There's really not necessarily a grant, you just, just. Put the bridge in there and say, you know, you'd like to have it considered, it's considered, so, um, but that's his. Just to, so you have an FYI, so that's what he was working on.
He just expressed, this is so much better and a fit, it just makes more sense and just, he was on board with hope.
Yeah, so it's good to hear.
Just more fiscally responsible overall.
Yeah, I mean.
I agree.
Very practical.
You gotta start at the ground up somewhere, supposed to be fiscally responsible, start here, let's go.
Got a motion.
Second?
Got a second? Any further discussion on?
Just, just so you know, too, there was some discussion about, you know, thi- this is just to build the bridge and, you know. People had, you know, contacted me and said, you know, who's gonna take care of the bridge, you know, and, and does there need to be a transfer, you know, at the. Deannexation, if you will, of some of that, it's like, don't even go there, this, this doesn't speak to any of this. I think, you know, this bridge is all steel, it should last a long, long time. Um, so, you know, I, I don't see those as being even issues to. You know, there's no point, the, the amount of money that'd be generated by taking that back to the county. Uh, the farm ground there wouldn't be very significant at all, it wouldn't be worth all of the paperwork and all the things that'll go along with it. Then you just replace the bridge and move on.
There we go.
That's two cents worth on that, so.
That was where this section of bridge was intended to go the whole time, when we got it, so when I bought it, that's where I was hoping it would.
Just took us a little longer to get.
Yeah, still.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Others are called vote all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chairwoman's aye, so the bridge between us, county and city.
Well, the bridge is closed, Paul, we want to allow grading the road a little bit here and there.
We'll always grade the road. We just, we would always take care of the road, which is blading it, but they would, they would take care of the aggregate.
Right.
Um, and so, um, nothing will change on that. Uh, and so, uh, yeah, we're just replacing the bridge and they're paying us a hundred thousand dollars over six years, that's, that's all we're doing here. Pretty simple, so I don't know, if you, I'll.
Can we get a copy or can we scan you a copy or?
However you wanna do it, I just, I need to get a copy back to them, so.
Oh, the veil.
Why don't I take this, I'll make a copy, get it to them, put a copy in our file and you can have the original up here, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, so the bridge, remember when we were buying that? Yeah, I called you and I. We were at, I think we were at ninety-two or ninety-something and then the next bid went to ninety-six and I said, we're putting in a. Last and final bid of a hundred thousand and that's, that's how we ended up getting that that day. So, yeah, I think it was.
A good buy.
It really has, yes, it's gonna.
This'll be in the second.
It'll be the second bridge and then we'll have a, a forty-foot span that, and we'll find a hole for that. Okay, one last thing, then Jean, if you could just sign in that box there, um. This is just the final piece of paper for the L fifty-one bridge that we finished over a year ago. So, uh, we'll finally get that wrapped up. Um, one thing, I just, I wanted to take a little time, I'm gonna, this is intended here next week and a couple of weeks here. Um, but this is a resolution that we do for posting. Of uh, of bridges, and so I don't know, we'll, we'll give a resolution number maybe on that before, but. Um, just to kinda give you a little background on what, um. Pass these around here. Our load restricted bridges, I mean, we've come a long way. Yeah, so, um. The, um. Kind of the purple there, those are all postings required because of the special haul vehicle legislation. And you can see, if you look at the posting in tons, a lot of them are in the forty-eight, there's a, there's a smattering there that are forty, but those. Almost all of those will carry. The ninety-six thousand pound semi without any problem. They're good bridges, there's no condition issues with them, they're just a lighter weight bridge. Okay, the ones in yellow are on the five-year program to be replaced, day labor. The ones in green on the five-year program to be replaced. With contract bridges. In the blue are railroad bridges that we've fixed down in your area, down there, Dave, and so. You know, and then there's some that we're replacing that even, that, that aren't posted, they're just a narrow little little bridge up by Tony Hill, you know, that's. It just needs to go one up on the county line and by the county, there's that county that, you know, carries a legal load, but it's just a kind of a crummy little old bridge. So, um. So you can see, there's not gonna be. A lot of, I mean, cause the purple ones or the red one, red is pinky, whatever you wanna call that color, magenta, is that what they call that, magenta? I was waiting for somebody to say what.
I was wondering what purple you were talking about.
But anyhow, uh, magenta, yeah, is he colored? Why? He's losing his mind.
No, I know you're not losing your mind, but.
Well, anyhow, uh, I mean, those, there's no reason to replace those, see, cause they're. Very good condition, they just, they're half ton pickup when you're really, after legislation needed, they're reporter time. So I just wanted to share that with you.
So Paul, if I can, just to clarify, uh, the FHWA number, that's just the number of the bridge, every, every bridge has a number in the.
Every bridge has a federal highway number, yep.
And then the posting tons, when you have three numbers. I guess, I see sometimes like the first bridge has one number, number eight. And then after that one, it has twenty-four, thirty-nine, thirty.
So the, 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 when the bridge gets to a. Point where its capacity is severely diminished, we just do a gross load posting and just say, this is for everybody. There's no truck configuration. The three truck configuration, there are three different truck types, like a, uh, it's a dump truck, okay? A semi tractor trailer and a truck and pup configuration. And so. And, and I actually, the postings don't actually represent any truck that exists out there. In real life, they're, they're this hypothetical truck that somewhat models those type of configurations. If that makes sense to you, there's so many different configurations of trucks out there that it's impossible to. You know, we'd have a sign that would look like this with, you know, and then people would look at it, wonder which one am I, you know, and so they have to kinda say, well, okay, I'm a semi tractor truck. You know, but I, you know, do I have four axles, five axles, seven axles, you know, but, so that's kinda how that's laid out. If that makes sense, that's a very convinced explanation. So gross load posting, they just get really bad and really.
But if it's a forty ton. Forty, that's for eighty thousand. And then, but that would still include like stepping up to the, the six axle.
Yep, any of those trucks.
Would be at ninety and the seven axle would be at ninety-six, you see what I'm.
But still gonna have the axle spacing and all that too.
Right.
We just don't list all those out.
No.
So you'd have a possible. You'd have a, you'd have a.
This does absolutely, it, it doesn't reflect any of the implements of husbandry.
Yeah.
Okay, the grain card, the manure wagon, uh, any of that stuff, none of that. And I think, you know, there was a bunch of research done and I think it just got kinda. You know, all put under here.
And have to have just a QR code in each bridge.
You know, that's interesting, we talked about that. There, there were some of us that talked about, how do we, how do we do that, uh, a QR code? Scan with your phone, who's gonna do that when they go forty miles an hour?
Jump out and.
That noser here, you know?
Supposed to be on that bridge. By the time it uploads.
That didn't work out.
Anyhow, and, and so this has to be done every year to legally sign this and make this, uh, the effective law, so if something does happen. You know, you've got this to get back, let's say, hey, we took action, we officially designated it, we posted it. Um, you went over it, you had too heavy below, you caused it to fail, you know, if you didn't have that, um. You know, then you don't, you have the effect of the law, you know, illegal posting.
Speaking of that, have you ever heard that in Plymouth County where that gentleman hauling umbels across dropped that high truss bridge last, last?
Yeah, I remember, I've seen pictures of that, I don't know.
I haven't heard much more about that now that you.
I forget that's difficult about that, that was just like right after the flooding when, uh, the summer.
So.
What was he, semi full bale, seven bales, yeah, and uh, well, across the bridge, must've been severely overloaded for the weight of the bridge. Ended up in the creek.
I'm teaching.
Okay, that's all I have.
I thought, would the two of you be available next meeting?
Yes.
Me and Kyle are running up at FSA office, maybe after, well, unless it's before eleven. I guess they're only kinda fighting time.
Yeah.
Duty today.
I'm going.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you do.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay, very good. Well, and good luck to everyone who's running for office, so hopefully it all works out.
Hope so.
Hope so.
It'd be an interesting night.
I think the regal will be.
Yeah. Can't wait.
Away to two seven.
December fourth, the election is twelve o'clock.
Okay.
December fourth. Event will be in Cherokee, December fourth.
That's right on the south side of. Transcendental Court?
Uh, District Three.
What do you mean that?
Uh, Little Sioux Event Center, it's right on the south side of Cherokee.
What time's it start?
Okay.
What, what time's it start, Jean?
Uh, that's not on here yet, but probably twelve o'clock, cause we usually eat, you know, with three.
Supervisors.
The Little Sioux Event Center?
I'm going, cause I'm the secretary.
Little Sioux Event Center?
Yeah.
We'll be.
You remember the Cherokee?
That'll learn.
Well, Schuman's got his, Schuman Reynolds.
Yeah, you're the only one that can run a van.
Oh. To the east of his building, probably grounds from the fairgrounds, so.
What'd you say, what'd you call it, the little?
Little Sioux Event Center.
How often does that district meet? I can't remember, I think.
Not very often.
Once a year?
Once a year.
Sometimes at ISAC maybe or something, I suppose, but not, yeah.
Alrighty, so we have a discussion on the family crisis, um.
We'll see, yeah, let's go to the burn ban.
Uh, burn ban, I think we, with all the rain, would be okay to, uh.
I think it'd be okay to lift it, I questioned, beans, we really didn't put it in place, do we have the authority to lift it?
Well, that, that's, that's why I guess I put it on.
I was gonna say, did Tim, Tim call and that's why, I mean, did he call the recommended?
I'm, I just, I was included in a text message yesterday, but there was several chiefs that said it was okay to lift it, but. I, again, I question, we didn't put it in place, so do we?
That was actually the Fire Marshal's office that ended up.
There's a bunch of counties that are lifted already, but I don't know how they lifted.
I would say it's fine.
Cause I went and looked on the map, I thought.
I mean.
Okay.
The, the Board of Supervisors has the authority to put on a burn ban, correct?
But so does.
And so does the state fire marshal, which is the route that they went last time, was to go through the state fire marshal, all the fire chiefs contacted him and they put it on. So I mean, to me.
Speaking, Tim just said this, let me know if I can send the paperwork to end the burn ban.
Are you serious?
Okay.
Please.
But it seems like that we should have the authority to take it off, no matter who put it on, or we should have the authority to put it on, if we should, should so choose?
I'll make a motion to rescind.
Alright, never can be.
It seems confused. Tim's gonna send us the paperwork, I think.
My question is, so like, do these other counties, like Shelby or Carroll, do they? Give that authority to like their EMA director to jump in and out?
That's what I'd like to see, have that authority.
Same here, and do you need to pass like a resolution or something that says, hey, we are. Giving that authority over to the EMA director to jump in and out, cause I know that. I think it's very cumbersome to have to wait a week, wait on the agenda and then wait a week to take it off the agenda.
I think that's something we could do once we have an EMA. Something we could do once we have an E M A. I agree a hundred percent. I mean, that's why.
Can it be in the job?
And then, and then we don't take it off sooner or later because we gotta wait a week.
Right.
And we also need to make it clear how they make that be known, whether it be, you know, through the radio and notify our, uh, news sources. How that word gets out there.
I think that's part of the E M A direction that.
We just will rescind it because I see a lot of smoke clouds that go around.
Yeah.
I agree. I just go for it. I, I. If we can change.
Sorry, I've been personally sending favor with the new E M I A guy.
Motion a second on the rescinding of the smoke ban.
Smoke ban, burn ban?
Head for Omaha to the dispensary.
Sorry, 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 sorry. I was thinking, you said there were a lot. All in favor?
Aye.
Po, Chair votes aye. We no longer have a burn ban in Crawford County, according to the Crawford County supervisors. Okay?
We'll then do so.
Make sure this is your job. Alrighty, uh, so we don't have that. Uh, do we know about the it's not lighting? We're waiting for the estimate to come so that we can approve that estimate. Uh, hopefully, I wonder if we can do that over a, uh, email. Uh, just so we can get everything ordered and have it done in a timely fashion, instead of waiting to know.
Okay.
I wasn't listening, sorry. I'm gonna see if I did. Ask a question.
I think we've got three people in there.
First of the morning, I had like, like, two tence of rain. Up on my hill, there's just smoke.
All over.
Two tence of rain. It's supposed to be windy this afternoon. People, come on.
The wind is the most important.
I mean, my, my dad asked me, and he actually called the fire chief to see. And was lifting his rear over the last. And three weeks, we've cut down seventeen trees on my dance. Far and away. And we were carrying, started turning down the corner, and it all, all out to the kind of a.
Right.
That big hole that we have and, um, he wants to burn it.
We got two good candidates.
And he's like, I call him. I said, well, I know it's not too hot. That was a few days ago. And then I had someone from the public call too and say, you know, it just takes too long for the supervisors, when you could be burning on Wednesday. Now, you guys don't meet till next Tuesday and it's this time of year. I got these to burn. I got this sort of.
I agree.
I said, I understand.
It's not great.
I need Amy.
Not great.
I didn't bust it.
So we don't do anything wrong.
And my neighbor called. What do you know about burning?
R E S.
What do you guys, what do you burn? He said, this is my garden. He said, burn it, Fred. Isn't burn it?
At some point, he changed the date to the nineteenth, so it will not be today.
Let's put it on. Post for the week commissioner job. Needs to be on the agenda for next week.
We got canvassing next week as well. That's Wednesday, though. Canvas is Wednesday. Your meeting Tuesday is normal, but the only thing you're doing Wednesday at eight o'clock in the morning is canvassing.
Okay.
For Thursday. Remember, because of the holiday. Talked about it.
Thirteen?
Yes.
You gotta talk about one.
I need a quorum. That's all I need. I have access.
I'll be there.
Executive board meeting in Des Moines at eight a.m.
What, what day?
I'll be there.
I'll be here.
Next Wednesday, eight a.m.
I'll be. Need a quorum.
Probably be working. Probably zoom in.
Well, no, you can't. Cannot zoom in on a, on a canvas.
Canvas.
Oh, it's for the canvas?
Canvas on Wednesday. We talked about this weeks ago.
We did, yep. I remember that.
So, I can't wait to see you here next Wednesday, whoever's gonna be here in a four and all.
Hopefully, there's no problems with the charter over election and if there's just.
There won't be.
There won't be, but there never has been before. If it is, it's could be your fault.
Exactly. If I need you, I'll hold off. Canvas. And just go out afterwards. It won't be bad. I mean, you know, it's. I can go late. Are you sure? Well, if we're in a big. What time you're meeting on Wednesday?
And Kyle are here. That's a quorum.
Eight a.m. I'll be there. Eight, eight-thirty. Price starts at nine. If the other four are here, you'll be fine. It's a two-day deal. If the other four are here, you'll be fine to answer.
Canvas.
We'll just talk to you.
It don't take any less time than a regular. I mean, the canvas takes as long as it takes. I mean, there are always this, you gotta go through each one.
It's probably gonna be an hour-ish, hour and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause you gotta go through all the books. I'll just show up late if I need to, and that's not really the one. I know, but if the other four are here, that's a quorum, so.
We just do them two at a time.
Yeah.
It'll just be more work for us. Don't worry about it.
It would be, on my behalf, it would be nice if we had four there because I, I wouldn't have to be a part of it.
Oh, four beside you, you mean?
Just three beside me, whatever. So I wouldn't have to be part of the charter.
Yeah, but you're, you're literally never gonna touch a ballot.
I don't.
Literally.
I don't, I just, I've been on this board. I've been accused of stuff that's happened. Never was ever part of it, but I was.
And if I do, I'll come here and take a resolution and be a little bit late for meeting.
Get used to it.
Just know how that power rolls.
I'm just trying to think of. Sax can be.
We got.
So that's why you have those tire bars on your.
We got you back. Alright, so it looks like, would we find out about our discussion with John?
November nineteenth is when he's coming, actually.
So he's not even coming at all? Alrighty, well, we're just gonna let that ride then. Alright, and the lighting in the basement, uh, the burn ban, as far as I'm concerned, we're up to citizens input. Gordon, do you have anything for, uh, citizens input?
Gordon.
Yes, I did. Paul did say he wants to meet with you too, which I had a gentleman.
Asked me if we had any leads on a new engineer. And apparently he's seen the, the ad or whatever, and he said, you need it. Cause we discussed up and.
We did, and we did up it.
Did we?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, did I get changed?
Cause we did a window of, it changed on the website. It changed at. Work Iowa Works. It changed wherever else. Would we say one thirty to sixty or something like that?
One thirty to one sixty.
I think so.
Well, then that should be fine then.
Well, Paul had looked at it, uh, last week and it still said one forty, so.
Where did he look at it at?
Looking at it on the, uh, our website.
Really? Okay, I'll look at it again.
Yeah, I, I just, uh.
Cause I think that's where he's seen it at as well, and he's like.
That's easy.
Yeah, it'll be.
We'll get it fixed.
The way it sounded, he might have.
Make it happen, Captain.
He might have had a person in it, but he took the page and just.